This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. Thank you, folks, for all joining us tonight for our March 15 meeting. We'll call it to order. Does anyone have any additions to the agenda to be added at this point in time? Okay, not hearing any, then we'll move right on. We are going to change the order around a little bit. And after we review and accept the minutes from February, we're going to ask Jason if you're okay with that to describe the new policy for bill paying, and that way you can move on from there, okay? Does that work with you?
Yep, it works.
Okay, cool. So let's consider the minutes from February 15, 2021. Does anybody have any changes or corrections that they saw while reading the minutes? Okay, not hearing any. Can I get a motion then to accept the minutes as Rachel prepared them for us for the February 15, 2021 meeting? Thank you, Catherine. Catherine, can I have a second? Dick, second, okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, so we have accepted the minutes from February 15. So as you recall from our last meeting, we were talking about perhaps bringing onboard a new way of paying bills and cutting checks. Well, we came up with another plan, and I'm going to ask Jason to describe it. You can see it's under Old Business here, adopting new protocol for bill payment and check cutting. And it does require us to vote to approve this, so I'm going to turn the floor over to Jason so he can tell us how he sees that happening.
Sure. So you should have received in your packet today, or from Joe, I think it was last week he sent it out. There's an accounts payable procedure that was sent out that we kind of came up with. It looks like Joe's bringing it up for us. And so basically, what we've been doing pretty much since I've been the bookkeeper is every couple of weeks, I would kind of come over to the library, spend maybe 15, 20 minutes filling out checks. And that used to be fine, not much of an issue because I actually worked out in Albany, so I would just swing by on my way home. Kind of since COVID and things have changed, so I work fully from home. So for me to go and spend 15 minutes at the library, it takes me about an hour and a half to two hours worth of travel. So we basically came up with a procedure to try to allow me to do stuff remotely. But yet we still cover all our bases as far as checks and balances. So basically, if we go through the procedure, pretty much anytime Joe receives any kind of invoices or the credit card bill, what he'll do is he'll scan them in using the copier, and you can just email them to me. Once I receive them, I'll go ahead and post them into QuickBooks. At that point, probably, we'll still probably keep to every two weeks or so. I'll generate a report that shows basically what bills need to be paid. I can then send that to whoever the authorized signers are, whether it's Dan or Melanie. We can send to them a report. At that point, then they can come into the library, actually physically fill out the check, sign them, and also at the same time kind of review the backup documentation of the invoices that go along with that check. And then, as usual, Joe can mail them out once they're all completed. So that's kind of everything in a nutshell.
Does anybody have any questions for Jason about the new policy for bill paying and check cutting?
This is all the same thing that was happening, except now it's being electronically sent in. And instead of physically being there every two weeks, it's just going to happen over email, right?
Right. And prior to this, Jason was the one who was actually writing out the checks. And then it now falls on either myself or Melanie to actually physically write the check and sign it. One of us had to sign it anyway. Now we're just adding the writing the check part of it as well.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, because I knew you guys signed it. All right, I got it.
There's also a little bit more work in terms of the digitization of the backup for all of the bills and all of that. But that's, you know, that's all right.
Does anybody have any other additional questions or concerns about that? Not hearing any, and I'm not trying to rush anybody. Can I get a motion that we will accept this new procedure for writing checks and paying our bills? And by the way, this does not involve, just in case anybody's wondering, this does not involve payroll at all. This is just bills like Nymo, oh, they don't call it Nymo anymore, National Grid, and our MasterCard or Visa or whatever we have. This is not cutting checks for payroll purposes, because we have a service for that. So I got a motion to accept this new protocol for bill paying.
I'll motion, Dan.
Thank you, Amanda. Seconded? Dick, six seconds. Okay, all in favor of the new procedure? And it's unanimous, okay. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Jason, for putting that together for us.
Yes, Jason, thank you so much. All right, we're going to the treasures report with Melanie.
Jason, why don't you stick around for this, and then after that you can...
That's good.
Okay, so we have our three financials for February. Our first one is the statement of financial position, which, once again, is just a snapshot of all of our accounts and all of our liabilities. There was not too much changes. This is comparing this month to last month. There are not too many changes, just our normal business checking, withdrawals for just our normal business. Does anybody have any questions on the first one, the statement of financial position? Okay, moving on is the statement of activity, which is comparing the period from January to now this year, 2021, with January to now of last year, 2020. Just one thing that you'll notice, and I believe Jason made a note of this, yes. Last year, we did have our NOx payment deposited by now. We do have the NOx payment. And I believe it was deposited, but it was deposited early March, so it will show up on next month's financials. But we do have that, so that's the big difference at the top. Also, if you go about three-fourths of the way down, you'll see the telephone and telecommunications there. The charge Joe did note was a little bit higher this year. One part of it is we still have our Zoom account, which is right around $15 a month that Joe has not canceled yet. And we talked in the financial committee and decided, or thought that it was a good backup. They have had some times that GoMeeting has gone down. And I think there was a long-term planning committee meeting that went down, and the only backup they had was the Zoom. So we thought that Joe could hold on to it for a little while longer, just so we can still have meetings if something has to go to a meeting. And that's all I have on the statement of activity. Did anyone have any questions or anything to add on that? Okay, and then finally, we have the budget versus actual. Once again, that NOx will be in next month. And once again, the telecommunications is a little bit higher. And on the second page, about a third of the way down the page, you'll see under where it says "library operations", right under that, it's actually "library materials", the periodicals is quite a bit over the budget, and that is including that new unanticipated but wonderful opportunity of the New York Times subscription. So that is why that is very high, that $1,128 includes that. And that was the only thing noteworthy that stood out on the budget versus actual. Does anybody have any comments, questions on any of this, or any, this one or any of the other two? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess we just need to... Yes.
You mean to approve it, right, correct? Yes, we do. I'm getting a nod from Joe. Okay.
Yes, yes.
To accept the treasures report, anybody want to move that?
Let's move.
Thank you, Paul. Seconded?
I'll second, Amanda.
All in favor of accepting the treasures report for February 2021? Anybody opposed or abstaining? All right, thank you very much. Hey, Joe, real quickly, just about the New York Times, and maybe you're going to bring it up in the directors' report. Do we ever get any kind of feedback in terms of how many of our patrons are actually utilizing it?
It's complicated, unfortunately.
Don't worry about it.
No, 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 no. It's a good question, and I'll tell you what, I'll write it up for the director's report next.
I was just curious, that's all.
Yeah, the best way that we have to measure the use, because we went in with Voorheesville and Gilderland, the best way to parcel out our use is by using the traffic statistics from the webpage that we set up, where you have to go and redeem the code. So the traffic to that website is, you know, the best analog that we have to how many people are using that out of the whole number that we know from the three libraries.
Have you received any comments verbally from people who have appreciated the fact that they now have access to the Times?
Yeah, yeah, I've gotten a couple of good, you know, a couple of people who were very excited about this.
Cool.
Yeah, are any of you using it? I use it. Does anybody else?
I've used it.
Yeah, this is good.
All right, directors report, Mr. Burke.
Okay, so there's a bunch of the a bunch of the things in the director's report, the written report are coming up later on in the agenda. So I'm just going to focus on a couple of things right now. Circulation is at about 75% of normal, which, again, I'm happy with. We've been fluctuating between, you know, call it two-thirds and four-fifths of normal circulation. So 75% is right in the fat part of the bell curve there, so I'm happy with that. There are a couple of notes about a few developments on the property. First, the increasing frequency of the trains, which came up last week for the first time when somebody who was pretty agitated about this, who works for the rail line that runs next to the library, came in and was dropping off train safety materials, basically was the reason that they were coming by, because they were very concerned about the increasing rail safety danger from having more trains and longer trains. So that's, you know, that's something that prior to that I had no idea about. I don't know how I would have had any idea about it. I've told the mayor. The mayor had no idea. I don't know how, you know, she or anybody else within the village would have known about it. But I do think it's an important thing to know about.
Longer trains and more trains are coming or are currently already coming?
They are coming. So this is in the director's report. The, as soon as, because of a merger between CSX Rail Lines and another carrier, there's going to be increasing frequency and longer trains, up to 9,000 feet long, which, for context, a mile is 5,420 feet. So this is like a mile and two-thirds.
The village didn't know about this either.
The village didn't know about this. This is currently a side effect of this proposed merger between CSX. And I've had this confirmed by CSX, by somebody who we know was involved in the caboose debacle a couple of years ago. But our contact CSS confirmed this for us. They have to build a spur out in Voorheesville in order to make the change. Somebody who's better at math than I can, than I am, can figure out how long it takes a 9,000-foot train to pass by a building if it's traveling at 20 miles per hour.
Does that have a reading exam?
That sounds very complicated, Joe.
That's why we need to, you know, I'm sure that there's like a high school junior in our midst who can get some extra credit for figuring this out for us. But, you know, it's got to be 10 minutes or more. So that's 120%. If it's 10 minutes, then it's 120% increase in the amount of train shaking, you know, activity that the building is going to experience in a given week. So that's, you know, that's a lot.
How many times a day?
Twice a day, once in each direction.
Oh.
Yeah, so it all has to be approved. The merger has to go through the transportation, what? The Surface Transportation Board, the federal the Federal Surface Transportation Board has to sign off on this. And I don't know if there's any opportunity within that process for public comment. I would think that some recognition of the fact that, you know, emergency service vehicles need to be able to get through, and there's not an easy bypass the way there is, for example, in Voorheesville. There should be some recognition of that and some accommodation, I would think. Or maybe just don't do it. I don't know. Because like, you know, if there's a fire, if there's a fire on the boulevard, and the closest, you know, the closest fire truck is in the village, and they got to get over the train tracks, the easiest, you know, if there's going to be a train going through for 10 minutes, you know, that's the difference between life and death. So anyway, just a thing, just a thing to be aware of. I've, so, and the other thing is the disposition of the the parcel next door to us, which has now officially been sold to Jeff Thomas. Jeff Thomas, who put forward a development plan for the parcel two years ago. He did not own it at the time. He had a contingency, a contingency offer on the parcel pending the successful approval of the development plan that he put out, which called at the time for 26 apartment units, a couple of a couple of storefronts, and would have used the parking lot as a thoroughfare. So that was shot down by the planning board. I don't think it even got to the zoning board. But there would have been some problems with there, too. But now he owns it. And so I would expect to see that issue come up again, probably soon. Or maybe not. He sometimes sits on parcels for, you know, for long periods of time, like the parcel across from the SECU, which he's owned for a number of years. And again, just something to keep an eye on. Any questions about either of those? I mean, I put into the report everything I know about it, so I will obviously keep you informed. Finally, we've got a bit of good news on the New York State budget. The Assembly and Senate each put out their one-house bills. And between those, there will be some negotiation and and a final legislative budget proposal will come out, and the governor will either sign it or not. But both of those increase aid for libraries above and beyond what the governor had in his proposals. So the governor had a seven-and-a-half percent cut down to $87 million for library systems. The Assembly comes in at $96.6 million. The Senate comes in at $94.1 million. Both the Senate and the Assembly budget $34 million for library construction, up from the governor's $14 million. So this is all good stuff. It's not where we had wanted it, but but it's better. It's better than it had been. What does that mean for us? That means that Nyla or Upper Hudson can put back into place five-day delivery, which was going to get cut down to two or three because of the budget hole that they're experiencing. It means that Upper Hudson can restore salary lines on their staff, which is tremendously helpful to us, that had been cut. Each of those staff members at Upper Hudson had taken a 20% pay cut, a 20% pay cut for the current year. That's going to be restored. So these are all good things. Any questions? Like I said, there's a few things in the written report that will come up later on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burke, very much. On to the committee reports. We'll leave the policy till last, since we've got a number of subtopics and that makes sense. Long-range planning, did they meet?
Yeah, long-range planning, we met with Tim Burke from Upper Hudson. We did a number of things in that meeting. One of the things that we really wanted to do was to go through the current long-range plan. And we did a quick run through that. We're going to do a little bit of a deeper dive at our next meeting. We also talked about the groups that we specifically want to focus on and get input from. So we have a number of groups that we've identified as being groups that we want to see how we're doing with them. So there's about 10 of those, including seniors, kids, elected officials, local business owners, the local teaching, and especially the reading instruction community. So there's a number of groups, and we sort of worked through that list a little bit at our meeting. So we're going to meet again the first Monday in April, which I think is the 5th. And we're looking forward to getting going.
All right, anybody have any questions about long-range planning for Joe? Personnel committee did not meet. Does the program committee meet? Program committee did not meet. Building committee, Paul, anything to add from the building committee's point of view? You're muted, Paul.
Thank you. We did meet, but I've got a couple of odds and ends. I've been getting more prices for the repair of the roof. And that's pretty optimistic, because we've gotten some, a few or four prices now in a particular range, where there's been some outliers. And I think they're just waiting, well, we have to decide as a group who we might want to do the work. And then, when weather is favorable, we can go ahead and have that done. Most of them seem to come up with approximately the same number of slates that have to be repaired. And let's see. So I got a call from the arborist, who I had spoken last year about. He called to say he still hasn't forgotten that he was offering to bring his bucket over and to try to bring that chimney cap back to its proper position. And I always talk about the trains going by. I have a feeling, you know, when those trains go by, the whole building rumbles. And so we need to have the weather be reliably 50 degrees or more, because we're going to use an adhesive which has to cure, and it takes quite a while for it to cure. So it needs 50 degrees, but he thinks he'll be able to do it. Unfortunately, one person can go up in a bucket at a time. And, but he's, you know, he's very capable and strong young man, so I think he'll be able to take care of that for us. The other thought I had before I heard from him was that, since they're going to be setting ladders up and ladders that are hooked onto the peak of the roof so that they can access the roof without damaging it more tiles, that one of them might have been able to set up ladders up on either side of the chimney and then roofed it. But so it's something to be considered. Either way, I'm sure it's going to, it would cost us approximately a couple of hundred dollars. That was the price that I got from the arborist, anyway. And that's about it. I think we're, Dan, or Joe was talking about that we really could get together possibly discuss a springtime activity to do some cleanup and whatever needs to be done on the outside of the library. So we'll probably plan that out in a week or two. I think Paul. Good.
Sorry, Paul. So how long do we need it to be 50 degrees? I mean, we don't want the, we don't want the temperature to drop below 50 degrees for how long in order for the ceiling to cure?
I was pretty surprised. I can't say for sure, but, you know, I would have thought, you know, six hours, eight hours. But this was in the days in order to get completely cured. But I'm sure it starts setting up relatively quickly enough to that the vibrations won't move that stone. I mean, it's all an experiment, anyway. It seems like the easiest way to try to secure that slate, the blue stone, rather, on the top of the chimney. But, yeah, it could be actual days before it's 100% cured.
Sure, so, you know, so we might not be talking about doing this until, you know, June, if that's what we need.
Yeah. Yeah, it's mostly that I think that he's afraid of freezing. I'll have to read the container that I purchased and see. So, yeah, but certainly, certainly may.
Okay.
I guess, you know, if the trains are going to be running through there more often, I don't know if that's going to start, but we'll have to keep an eye on it, make sure that it doesn't go even, you know, move to the extent that it could present a problem.
Well, right, but, yeah, I think we've got some time with that. It may not be, according to the CSX guys, that's not going to come for a year. The SMS guy thought it would be a little bit sooner than that, but but, you know, I don't know.
Paul, is it your sense that we should have a decision about the roof tiles by our next meeting, so the board can vote on it? Or what do you think?
I, Joe and I discussed this. It seems like it might be good to hash it out a bit in a committee meeting. And then, Joe, is that what, was that your thought, or?
Yeah, I was thinking that we could meet. The current members of the building committee are Dan, Paul, Dick, and myself. Anybody else who wants to join up, by all means. But I was thinking that maybe we could have a meeting in person, outside, distant, masked. But just so that we can see what we're talking about as we're talking about it.
Sounds great.
And now that Dick is back from South Carolina, I'll send around an email and just see when people are able to do that. If we can work through the different bids that we have for the roofers, then potentially, we would, you know, be able to have the board vote on awarding a contract at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Anybody else have any comments or questions for Paul? Okay, not hearing any. Where are we? Finance committee, anything to report, Melanie?
Nope, and we went over everything already. Nothing new.
All right, then we go to the policy committee, and we've got three policies that are being looked at. Which one do you want to do first, Joe?
Let's do the easy one first. All right, so the easy one in this case is the trustee recruitment policy. So previously, the policy had been real short, real concise. And I have added to it just a little bit of a preamble that lays out that that lays out that the, in our selection of trustees, the board does not discriminate in any way for any reason. I have also added a little bit of a additional tag on it, just laying out the, the terms of office, just so that, you know, potential trustees have that in hand when they're, when they're applying. Because otherwise you wouldn't, you wouldn't see that until you get to the, the bylaws. So that's the trustee recruitment policy. There's an associated form that goes along with this and I tend to update that whenever we have a new president. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the trustee recruitment policy? As it's amended here? If not, I get a motion. Oh, go ahead.
Hey, this is just a, like the words are fine. The, what is it? The one, two, three, fourth line down. It says other reasons, other reasons.
Oh.
Yeah. It's just a duplicate words. It's no contextual change.
No, I actually had a, another question and it certainly doesn't have to make its way into this document, but more generally. With the, the way new trustees are invited right now, I mean, for, for all that I know for the last few months, it seems like a lot of personal knowledge of, of people who are invited is necessary that it's, it relies on having some connection to the library or someone who's currently on the board. And I'm curious whether we've, whether there have been any conversations about what that means for diversity on the board? And whether we've ever considered actively recruiting people who may not already have, you know, a connection to someone who looks like us, thinks like us.
Yeah, no, it's, it's definitely, it's definitely something that is in the forefront of, of my mind. The, the process that we go through for, for selecting new trustees is exactly as you described. It's, you know, they, you know, it relies on our knowledge of, of the, the community. And that carries with it, you know, certain, certain biases. So there's, you know, there's, there's definitely some work that, you know, could be done around diversifying the board so that we reflect every element of our community. And I think that that's probably something that's going to make its way into the long range plan. And, you know, it's, it's, it's certainly something that I, I think about quite a lot. So that's, that's not, I think, the most satisfying answer. But it's, you know, it's the answer that we've got at the moment.
No, I think it's a perfectly good answer because it's not something that I think you could just snap your fingers and say, oh, this has been an ongoing thing and now we can solve it and it was easy all along. I think it definitely is, the long range plan is probably an excellent place for it because it would take some, you know, some thoughtfulness to do it right. So we're not just inviting people to, to represent as tokens, but to actually be involved in the library community in a positive way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Okay. Anybody else have any other comments or concerns or questions about the trustee recruitment policy as being described here redesigned, so to speak? Not hearing any. Can I get a, we are to vote for this. Can I get someone to move that we, that we move forward with the trustee recruitment policy with the amendments that Joe has outlined for us?
So move.
Motion.
Okay. Who said that? Okay, Katie and Dick. All right, very good. All in favor of accepting the, the new trustee recruitment policy? Anybody abstaining or whatever else you could do? Yes, there. Okay, no one. Very good. I couldn't come up with the word anyway. So very good. Joe, which one do you want to do next? What's the second easiest one? You're muted, Joe.
The second easiest is probably the whistleblower. They're all, none of them were particularly controversial, I would say. But let's, let's do the whistleblower next. All right. So whistleblower policy. This is one of the few policies that we are required to have by New York State. And so we do. The old policy was okay. But I, just to my eye, it was poorly written and it lacked a certain degree of precision that I would have, would have liked. So, so this, this new draft, I, I think holds to the, to, you know, all of the stipulations of the old whistleblower policy. But it just, you know, sort of makes it more, more clear and precise. The goal of the whistleblower policy is to create an avenue for anybody who knows of something happening within the organization that may violate either federal law, state law, local law or our own policies. So it creates a method for people to be able to report their concerns about such violations. In, allows for people to not be persecuted or prosecuted, not persecuted or prosecuted, not to be punished internally within the organization for having done so. It does not allow for anonymous reporting, but it does insist upon secrecy to the greatest extent possible. So, you know, the person has to report in a, in a, in a way that makes their identity known to the person to whom they're reporting. And that can happen either to me or to any of the executive board members, president, vice president, secretary, treasurer. And, but then that gets reported onto the board. The board will, will hear of this complaint. But unless it's absolutely necessary, the person's name will not be included in that report. So it does insist that any, any report of this kind be done in good faith. In other words, it, there has to be some sincere expectation that, or some sincere belief that this violation occurs, that this violation is actually occurring. And, and then finally it says that we will review this policy on, on an annual basis as we're doing for all of our policies. So that's, that's it. That's the, that's the whistleblower policy. And again, there's a form that goes along with this, a whistleblower form. I still have to update that. But I, I think that should be, you know, that should be a quick job. So any questions on the whistleblower policy?
Okay, not hearing any. Can I get a motion to accept the revised whistleblower policy that Joe has just described? Okay, Paul moved it, seconded?
I'll second, Melanie.
Melanie seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? All right, then there we go. And on to the last one, which was, I don't remember what it is.
Conflict of interest.
You're muted, Joe.
There we go. Okay. So it's the conflict of interest policy. Now, this is one that I know you have all seen before because everybody, when they became trustees, and in fact, four of you just did this very recently, have had to sign off on that you have read and understood the conflict of interest policy. This is the, this is another one of those policies that we need to have in place per New York State law. So the goal here is to make sure that we run our business affairs and our board affairs with integrity and that no person is benefiting from their association with, or they're, you know, from, from controlling board policy. Neither they are benefiting nor their, their family is benefiting. So this is something that appeals, applies both to trustees, also to, to staff members. So once we pass this new policy, everybody's going to have to sign this again, including all of the, the staff. I have made a few changes to the, to the policy. I've removed any reference to the PAB or professional advisory board, which I, when I, when I saw that, I, you know, I didn't know what that was. I don't think that we've ever had a professional advisory board. So my, my sense is that this was probably just taken from boilerplate. Maybe I'm wrong about that.
No, I think you're right about that.
Okay, so here I have added that transactions shall include but not be limited to, so transactions. The, so disclosure has to be made of any person who is recusing themselves for reasons that involve a set number of, a set list of transactions, including the sale, purchase, lease or rental of property, et cetera, et cetera. I've added the award of any appropriation grant fellowship contract or subcontract. So the reason that that has come up is that, and well, I guess we'll talk about it later. But if anybody is involved in the appropriations process, that fact needs to be the municipal appropriations process or, you know, if it's statewide, if we had somebody who worked at the New York State Development, Library Development Department or worked for the, the dormitory authority who oversee construction grants, then that would have to be reported in our minutes. And that person who was serving on our board would have to recuse themselves from the discussion and decision making on that, on that, on that, on that. Let's see, what else did we change? We changed the reporting mechanism for, for the investigation of, of whether or not a, a conflict of interest exists. And if there's some, if, if there's, if there's some conflict, if there's, if, if a employee or a board member is not sure whether they're, whether they have a conflict of interest or not, whether, you know, something that they're involved in constitutes a conflict of interest, they can bring that to the president or to the board directly. And the board will make a decision upon that matter, given all of the facts and evidence. It also creates a procedure for if somebody else within the organization feels that another member, other, either employee or trustee has an unreported conflict of interest. So in that case, they bring it to the, to the, to the president of the board and then the president of the board brings it to the full board. The full board has a discussion about it and then they take whatever action is, is necessary on that point. So those are the changes and adaptations that we have made on the, the conflict of interest policy. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns on that?
Okay, not hearing any. Can we get a motion to accept the revised, the new and improved conflict of interest policy for the Alphabt Free Library? Dick moves it, seconded? Katie has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay. Thank you, Joe, very much.
Thank you.
We must be down to the near end of the, of the policies review, are we not?
We're, we're, we're moving right along. So we're, we're moving at a really nice clip. It looks like we'll be done with the existing policies, our review of existing policies.
Before the trains come.
Yeah, before the trains come. Yeah. I think July or August, we will have completed the, the cycle.
Cool. Excellent. All right.
Totally fantastic. And I'm, I'm super happy with the way that's all been going. So thank you, Dan. Thank you to, to Catherine and to Deb for all of your, your input and advice and suggestions and help.
All right. I think that covers our committee reports unless I'm missing something. If anyone can tell me if I am, then if not, we're going on to old business. We've already adopted the new protocol for bill payment. So we're now going to talk about reopening for browsing. We're revisiting that idea. I don't mean to keep throwing it back to you, Mr. Burke, but it's up to you. So there you go.
It's what you pay me for. So, okay, so at our last meeting, we had, we had a little bit of discussion about this. In the intervening month, we have been below 3% seven day average Albany County positive test rate. Basically, it's been there since February 13th. So that's a good, long, nice plateau. Currently, the, the positive test rate, the seven day positive test rate is, as of today, it's at 1.7. So that's, that's really good. We've come a long way from the, the, you know, November, when it was in double digits for, you know, for over a month. So things are, things are definitely getting better. They can always get worse. They can always get worse. So keep it up with the masking, with the social distancing, not taking any, you know, unnecessary, unnecessary risks. And we'll be, be through this as soon as, as soon as we can. But I do think it's important to recognize the progress that we've made. And I do think that it's this point, it is safe and appropriate to move forward in our reopening. So the way that we have outlined that in our reopening plan, the next step is browsing by appointment. So this would be going back to the, the mode of operation that we were in between late September and I think it was early November, maybe mid-November. Yeah. So like, yeah, for a couple of months in the fall. Basically, people would call ahead, make an appointment to, to, to browse the collection in person. The last time I felt that the, the appointments were too short to be particularly satisfying or useful for some people. So rather than 10 minutes, we're going to make those 15. We could go up to 20 if, if we feel like that's necessary. The computers will remain off limits. So we're not going to be opening up for, for use of the, the computers yet. We may do that as early as next. I may ask you to, to let us do that as early as next month. But we are going to earmark one bathroom for public use and one bathroom for staff use. We are going to allow as many as, as five people in, in a family or one individual. So it's either one individual or small family at a time. And, you know, I don't expect there to be a line around the corner waiting for, you know, waiting to get in. But for people who've, you know, been, been missing us and missing being in the building, it, I know that it was, that it was very satisfying for them to be able to do that when we were doing it in September and October. So that's the plan, if you agree.
Go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, that, that 15, 20 minutes, did that include checking out or that, what is that?
Yeah, that includes checking out.
Okay. Have you had any problems last time? People, have you heard?
We, we didn't have any problem. I mean, we didn't, you know, people were just happy to, to be able to. We, we didn't have any problem. I mean, we didn't, you know, people were just happy to, to be able to, to be here. And so, no, we, we really didn't have any problems at all. I mean, nobody, nobody stamped their foot and said, I won't leave when their, when their appointment was over. You know, nobody, nobody had any problem with our procedures.
Have you heard any reports of people got sick because of this? Because people?
I, it beggars belief to think that it would have happened, but it's certainly not impossible. I haven't heard about anybody who, you know, attributed their, their catching, you know, getting, getting sick to their being here. You know, I will say that, you know, we've, the work that we've done on the HVAC system and so that, you know, we're, we're cycling, we're cycling through the intern, you know, through the, the internal air and limiting, limiting the number of people that are going to be in at any given time. I think those are the, you know, the best precautions that we can take to make sure that, you know, nobody is getting sick, whether staff or, or patrons.
Hey, Joe, I don't want to sound paranoid because I'm not that kind of a person, but, you know, you know, it's a small village and most people are coming from most likely not too far away. Do you think we really need to open up the bathrooms? I mean, I mean, I mean, I'm just thinking about when somebody go, if someone does use it, does that mean somebody on the staff has to go in and like sanitize everything?
Yeah, that, that is what that means.
See, that to me is the wise use of, of staffing.
Yeah, I mean, I, fair enough. But first of all, I would say that while
I have a hard to know who that person's going to be, by the way, just so you know.
What?
Huh? I'm looking at him. I'm betting that's who that person's going to be.
Oh, that does the decent, yeah. We all do, we all do.
I have to say, I don't know. I, I question whether or not it's necessary to do so at this, at this juncture.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I hear you. I will also, but I, but I would say that while, you know, we draw quite a lot of our circulation from, from the, the walkable area from the village, there's plenty of people who come down off the hill, plenty of people who come out from Gilderland Center. You know, we just did a card earlier today for a new patron who lives in the Lansing, for whom we are the closest library. So it's, it's not, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. Let's, let's try it and see how it goes. The disinfecting process that we're going through is not onerous. I mean, we're spraying down surfaces. That's basically, that's it. You know, we, we've got, we've got sprays. We're not wiping, we're spraying after, you know.
If a staff member is uncomfortable doing it, does that staff member not have to do it then?
No, no, I mean, if there's, if there's another staff member here, they can ask another staff member to do it. But, you know, it's, it's, but otherwise, yeah, you have to do it. It's, it's as, as with, as with any of the other cleaning procedures. You know, there's, there's a certain number of things that, yeah, that we, that, that anybody who's, who's working needs to do. And that's one of them.
A lot, a lot of facilities don't have bathrooms. And for the little time people are there, I don't think it's necessary even have them, have them available. You know, they're not coming, they're going to the bathroom, they're going, going to browse books. To solve, solve all problems, just don't have it available.
Okay, I will, you know, I will modify the procedures.
Joe, there's only two people who have voiced a concern about that.
But I'm actually going to jump in here and say that I have an acquaintance and I don't know whether she's a library user or not, who has a medical condition that could make not having access to a bathroom problematic.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
So it, maybe it's a, we don't advertise that we have a bathroom available, but if somebody requests it, it can be made available at need.
Okay, that's a wonderful idea. Okay.
I think that's, I think that's the thing. Not that we would have been advertising it. Probably what we would have done if we had had a, probably what I would have done if we had not had this conversation is that I would have had a procedure on our door signs for, you know, the, the one bullet point saying, you know, one bathroom is available or, or whatever. So I will just leave that off. I will just leave off the, you know, the bathroom piece of it. And for most people, probably 90% of people, it, it's not going to be, you know, it's not going to be an issue. People need to make an appointment. So it's not, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, it's not an unexpected thing that they're going to be here at the, at the library. So I will just not put it on the sign. And if, and I will tell the staff that if they have a concern, well, let me think about it. Well, I'll, I'll think, I'll think some more about the bathrooms, given the, given the conversation that we've had. My preference is to not embarrass anybody or make anybody, you know, feel that it's, it's, it's a big deal. So I will give some thought as to how to do that.
Especially before those big trains come.
Yes.
With the long trains coming, then you gotta figure out the bathroom.
Sure, yeah.
Then we can leave.
You can't get home.
Can't get home.
Anybody else have any comments? Paul, go ahead.
This may have been covered at another time, but as public facing employees do our staff, are they all eligible for a vaccine now?
Yeah, this is, I think there was a, a quick line about this in the, the director's report. But, but yeah, it's, so as of last week, the governor has changed the, the statewide guidance for, for vaccine eligibility. So at the same time that he lowered the, the, the age from 65 to 60, he also said that all public facing, public employees or nonprofit employees, public facing, public facing, public employees and public facing nonprofit employees, which were covered on, on both counts, are now eligible, are eligible to receive the vaccine as of March 17th. So that's this coming Wednesday. So as of this Wednesday, we can sign up to make a, make an appointment. We've also heard that the county is going to be doing a, an event locally that will be specifically for and exclusively for public employees. It might just, you know, it might be one of these events that they do at the Armory or at the Times Union Center or someplace else, maybe at SUNY, that is going to be exclusively for public employees. So I'm, I'm signed up, I'm, I'm signed up for that. I don't know what the, the date is going to be yet. We have another employee who signed up for that. We also have three other employees who have gotten vaccinated, either the first or both, already for other, other qualifying reasons. So we're, you know, we're moving along and, you know, in, in getting vaccinated. Obviously, it's not a requirement. We cannot require anybody to, to, to get the vaccine. And we wouldn't want to, even if we could. But I have strongly encouraged every staff member to do so.
Anybody else have any other comments for Joe about the reopening procedure? This is going to require a vote, I believe. So we are going to ask for someone to make a motion. Up, go ahead, Joe.
I'm gonna, just one last point, when, when we get to the, to the motion that we're making. So we're, we're talking about a week from Monday, a week from today. So next, next Monday, the 20th. Yep.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion that we approve the reopening protocol as of the 22nd of March, as Joe just described, for a limited reopening and browsing of the Alphamont Free Library? Katie said yes, she made the motion. Anybody want to second that motion? Shannon seconded the motion. And all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, and we are going to reopen for limited browsing on the 22nd of March.
Can I ask for a two-minute break before we move on to the, the last couple of things?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
So, how's everybody doing? Good? You're a good one? I know you're a good one. Please don't take this the wrong way though, okay? Because this, this was a new event for the Capuanos at our home. I shouldn't tell you this, but since we have two minutes, I will. I don't know about you guys, but we live kind of in an old house. You know, sometimes you get mice scratching in the wall. Did you ever have a weasel in the wall, though?
No.
Oh, yeah. That was pretty cool.
That'll take care of your mouse problem in the wall, though.
Certainly will. Oh, yeah. It was scratching to the wall and I banged on it, you know, being the train biologist that I am. I said, that'll take care of it. And it didn't stop. And I looked out of the corner of my eye and I see making a small little hole in the sheet rock right above the floor in the hallway. And then I see the little nose start to stick out. And I said to Christine, my wife, I was like, Christine, get me a big jar. So she brought me this really, really big ball jar, like a gallon sized ball jar. I put it against it and the thing popped out and it was a weasel. And so now I got a weasel and a terrarium. What am I supposed to do with that?
Now I wake up with, oh.
She gets me a manila envelope and I slide it down between the wall and the end of the jar. I got the weasel in the jar. And, well, anyway, long story short, we relocated it on the other side of the railroad tracks and it hasn't come back. But it was pretty darn exciting.
Hey, Ian, what color was it?
It was brown. It was not white. It was brown. Yep. But it was, um, yeah, I, you know, I wanted to, I should have taken a picture, but I didn't have gloves on. And the thing was really trying to get out through the manila envelope where my hand was. So I, I thought better of stopping to take a photo. So never had that happen before, though.
Is it like my stand where there's one, there's more, do you think?
It's been really quiet mice-wise around the house, though. So, but no, one's enough. Trust me, one is definitely enough.
I hope it didn't have babies.
I hope not. Anyway, we're back, Joe.
Sorry, guys. Thank you.
Oh, my God, that was all taped, wasn't it? That was all recorded, wasn't it? Now that I'm thinking about it. Oops, I forgot about that. Oh, well.
Public record.
Public record. At least I didn't, at least I didn't use the terms I used to describe it when I first saw it go in the jar. So that, that's good.
I can't imagine what you said.
Rachel, you're chickens. You know what I'm talking about.
Oh, I hear scratching in my wall. Now when I hear it in the night, I'm going to listen to this story. And I'm going to think it's not a mouse, it's a weasel. And I'm going to freak out. I'm calling you tonight when I hear this mouse.
All right, on to new business. Approval of the 2020 New York State Annual Review, or Report, excuse me.
Yep. All right. So any, any questions about this? This is, it needs to be passed by the board. I, I hope people did not stay up until three in the morning reading this thing. But any, any questions? I can promise you, there's, you know, there's, there's nothing in there that hasn't, you know, that hasn't been reported out already that, that you, that you need to know.
Okay, then. Anybody have any questions for Joe? Can I get a motion to approve the 2020 New York State Annual Report? Catherine made the, made the motion. Thank you. Seconded?
I'll second.
Amanda seconded. All in favor? Anybody opposed or abstaining? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Summer concert series, Joe? What's up with that?
Summer concert series, yeah. It has come to my attention that the, the town of Gilderland is going ahead with their summer concert series in Towisenton Park. There are probably some meaningful distinctions between our setup and their setup. But given the, given the fact that they're going ahead with theirs, as actually they, they did, which I somehow forgot last year, there, there, there was a, there was a Towisenton Concert Series last summer. But given the fact that they're, they're going forward with theirs, other villages and towns are going forward with theirs, I just wanted to have a discussion about this and see where, where we were. I have brought it up with, with the, the mayor in the context of our budget request, for which we have a request for $1,000 to support that series. We got $1,000 for it last year and didn't spend it. So, and we, we talked about this with the, the village board and, and the mayor during, during that discussion. At that time, I said, you know, I didn't know what the, what the, you know, what the state regulations are about gatherings or what they were going to be by the time July gets here. You know, it's looking better, better and better as the days go by and as the months go by. Hopefully, it's even better by July. Typically, we would start our concert series the Tuesday after the 4th of July and run it through till Fair Week or the Tuesday before Fair Week, depending on when that falls. I do think that we've got a little bit of time with this. If we didn't want to go ahead and make a decision now, I think that there's, there's enough local musical talent that we could put something together pretty quickly. You know, even, even if we didn't start until May. I think we could, as long as we knew, you know, to reserve the dates and get the villagers' permission to do it, I think we could, you know, put something nice together. But there are some outstanding questions. Because I have learned what the, the governor's regulations are on, on gatherings, the size of gatherings. So you can have up to 200 people for outdoor gatherings at this point. Those can, that can go up to 500 people if everyone is vaccinated. But obviously, we don't have a way of controlling for that. We don't have any way of controlling the crowd whatsoever. It's never, you know, we've never had to. We've never had to say, you know, you 201st person, stay on the other side of Main Street and, you know, listen from there. So we don't really have a mechanism for crowd control. We don't have a mechanism for, oh, the other thing here is that everybody has to be masked during the performance. We don't have a way of, you know, regulating that either. And, you know, maybe the thing is that, you know, we just put up signs, say from the stage, you know, you have to wear masks, but then don't sort of follow up on that. I, I don't, I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know if, I don't know if there is a right answer. I don't know. What do people think?
Well, everything you say is true. We don't have control. And I'd love to have it again, but without the control, I don't know. I'm not sure. I, I thought maybe it's not a good idea.
You know how many people usually show up?
When we count, we usually average. So our lowest attended concerts, you know, tend to run into 60, 70 people. We have gone over 200, but it's a very rare for that to happen. I would think that on a nice day, having not been able to do one of these in a while, you know, you, you could, you could easily get that 200. And then, you know, what do you do?
It's not only the amount, which we never know, but the way it's set up, people sit on the lawn, people sit together. No control, you know?
Right. One, one idea that I sort of had to do this, which is One, one idea that I sort of had to do this, which is not, not total control, but it's maybe a little bit more control, would be that if we, if we, if we did want to go ahead with it, we could get one of those foul line chalk away, we could chalk out 10 by 10, 10 by 10, 10 by 10 squares around the park and say, you know, each family gets a square, and then when the squares are up, when the squares are all used, and you have to stay in the square. So that would be a thing. And then, once the squares are up, you know, you have to stand on the other side of Main Street. I don't know if that's something that we can do. It's probably.
And I don't know if, like they're saying, the regulations, if, if everybody keeps a mask on, or if there's vaccination, like the numbers. Do we really want to put it back on, you know, like Joe, if it's us, you know, trustee or somebody there, like, how do you have two or three people for a crowd of 200 to maintain control? And can we really ask, hey, have you been vaccinated? Show me proof. I mean, that's tricky.
Yeah.
But I also think that things are changing, like you said, quickly, relatively. So I guess I would almost be inclined to, to not just say no right now, but see how long we have to make this decision and see where things are headed as well.
Yeah, and we may be able to do a partial season series, you know, where we say just, you know, the second half of July by ourselves a little extra time.
That's what I was thinking, because there's all these goals by July. So if we just do end of July and August, and then we wait to see how things are going, right, because none, none of, all the best plans don't necessarily come out, but we see where we are at that point. Maybe it's, maybe it's not that bad. But I think right now, saying everything is going to be fine, and we can control it, I agree, seems questionable.
Yeah.
And so maybe you could put out on social media, just kind of take a temperature of, like, where people are at, like, hey, we're talking, we're in discussions about our summer concert series, just kind of looking to get people's feedback on it. Because we don't, we wouldn't want to come across as being irresponsible as, you know, forward-facing, left-wing reps.
The decision, so like, my daughter goes to the dance studio in Gilderland, and they're going to have their dance recital at Towisnthe Park, May 8th. But there's the same regulations. They have to do it in phases. If also, like, seeing how other events are unfolding, because I think there's going to be, I don't know how they're doing graduations this year, or, but I'm wondering if by the time it's summer, we might have a better handle on how big, I say big, because we don't know, right, if, but I'm with you, Joe, that I feel like people have been so cooped in that these events could be bigger than normal, just because people are so excited to be out, and but I'm wondering about how other, how are other events that are happening, or even Gilderland's planning for their concerts, like, what, what are they doing to try to keep it, you know, following protocol?
Well, you know, they have, at Towisnthe, there's, you know, essentially a ticket booth kind of thing. I mean, there's, there's one, there's, everybody has to get filtered through through, through one entrance, where people can be, you know, you could do a temperature check, or you could ask for that, you know, vaccine proof, if that's what they were doing. Or you can, you know, tell them that you have to wear, or you can click, click off how many people are coming through the, through the gates. So it is more controlled. There's, there's set seating. And, you know, so those are things that we don't, you know, that, that we really don't have that makes it easier for them to, to do that.
A couple, couple thoughts. One is that my impression from the, the couple of town concerts that I've gone to is people mostly go for the concert, whereas our concert series is a village-wide social event. And I think keeping families, especially kids, apart is going to be a taller order for us than for a lot of other events. That said, what you had mentioned about the, the chalk boxes, it would probably be helpful if we decide to go ahead with this, if it's not chalk boxes exactly, to have some sort of visual reminder of spacing, even if we don't enforce it, just so that people are in the headspace, they have a consistent visual of, that's right, I'm supposed to be distancing. So that if even everyone doesn't follow it exactly to the letter, you don't have a lot of people slipping up because they're back into their concert series frame of mind. It could be useful to have something ju- just out there for people to see that, that reminds them that they need to behave themselves.
Yeah, thank you.
Have we, have we ever, I mean, if we're trying to control people, could we use the stage at Bosunkil for some of them? I feel like there's more lawn there, too, in front of it.
That would control more the in and out. I feel like you either really have to go in there versus, like, if you wanted to know more of a number count, that could help, you know?
That's, that's true. You know, I hadn't thought about using the, the Bosunkil stage at all. That would certainly cut down on the number of folks who, you know, hear music out in the world and are reminded that there's a concert going on, and let me grab my chair and head on down. You really got to, you know, try to get to Bosunkil. So there'd be smaller crowds based on that, you know, and from the times that we've had, you know, rain-moved concerts at Bosunkil in the past. You know, we've never gotten a whole lot of people. So if that's, that's kind of the, the goal, then that would help in that, in that context. There is more space where people can spread out. So that is, that is an option that I had not considered. And I will bring that up to, to the village.
Well, how I know in a park, you really have less control, because it's, people walk off the street, you know, there's no doors to go through. You just come, and it's wide open, so no control.
Okay, well, I, I thank you all for your thoughts, and I, I think, you know, best probably to give this some time. And we'll, we'll see how things shake out. There's no, you know, there's no advantage to us being the, the first event of the season. So I think everybody who's saying, let's see how it goes in other places, I think that's right. You know, let, let people maybe get it out of their system a little bit before we, before we start ours. So having a shorter season is definitely something that we add to our, our thought process. The Bosunkil stage is definitely something that I will add to my thought process. Visual reminders about separation. And I would, I would just ask if there's anybody who, who wants to be involved in this. I have not yet reached out to, to Lori McCutcheon, who has in the past helped us out with booking the concert series, but if there's anybody who, who wants to be involved in this, this decision-making process with me, be happy to, happy to have the help. So that's, that's good on that.
We're just going to table this until the May meeting then, for now. Revisit it in May?
Well, we'll talk about it in April, but we'll count on, yeah, by the, I, I guess, I guess, I, I think it's unlikely that we would have enough new information by April, by mid-April, that we'll be able to make a decision. So I guess we'll be looking to make a firm decision one way or the other at the, at the May meeting. But we will talk about it again at the, at the next meeting.
Okay, the book sale, one more summer event.
Another, well, early summer. So that's, 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 that's one that I think that we can more safely start, start planning for.
Are they moving forward with the Villagewide Garage Sale? They're not, are they?
They, they are, yeah. So again, this is in the, you, you got to read my director's report sometime.
You know, sometimes I will, Joe, okay? Call me out on that. That's a good one, Joe.
I'm sorry. No, it's, it's, so, yeah, the, the villages, or the, the school is going ahead with the garage sale. And so, you know, our part of that has always been the, the book sale. And I, I do think that for a number of reasons, it would be, be good to, to do that. People have been asking about it. People have been, you know, so it's something that people often look forward to. It's a revenue generator for us. It is a way of, of us weeding our collection, having something to do with the books that we read from our collection. And so I would like to have a discussion about going forward with, with that. We don't have a date yet. We, we don't have a, we don't have a definite date for it yet. But historically, it has been the first Saturday in, in May, so I think that's May the 7th, most likely.
My, I just figured about wood box. I don't know how you would handle it. I mean, you have to sanitize books, or, or people bring books. What's that mean? You have to sanitize everything, and then people come and they, they go lots for all the books and touch, touch them. They're dead, out of control, but.
You know, that's, it's, that's a tough one. You know, what would we, what would we want to do in terms of the sanitation, or sanitization? I, I think that, you know, you know, maybe we would have to have a rule that, you know, you know, if you, if you pick it up, you know, you, you bought it, or something like that. Or we could, you know, offer wipes for anybody who feels like they need to wipe things down as they, as they buy them. Certainly, we would have hand sanitizer out for anybody who's coming in, so that we can be pretty sure that their, their, you know, their hands are, are pretty clean if they're picking things up. That's what we're going to do for people who are going to be browsing at the library. In order to cut down on people coming in and out of the building, I think that it would be smart to limit the drop-off time, where in the past, we have had people drop donations off as early as the Wednesday before the, the sale. I think that it would be, you know, one thing that we could do would be to start setting up on Friday, as we always have done in the past, set up the tables outside, and just have people deliver right to those tables, so that we're not bringing them inside out. That would also, I think, cut down on the number of donations that we have, which would probably be a good thing. So those are a couple of things that I've been, been sort of thinking about.
Joe, like, I go to Finn the Fishmonger, and they have, they're not like latex gloves. They're like little plastic baggy-style gloves, like, just very cheap gloves. I wonder what the cost would be, like, like, let's say a box of like 200 is, you know, 20 bucks or something. If, for that peace of mind, you know, just like we do, is if you're going to be browsing, please put on these little plastic baggy gloves, and then we just have a little barrel to dump them in, then, then we don't have to worry about wiping down the books, because they'll have gloves on as they're touching them. For that peace of mind, rather than making all these extra steps, or having people that aren't looking with their eyes, but touching with their hands kind of thing. If that's of value.
I think that's, that's a, yeah, that's, that's a, we could definitely do that.
Yeah, that, that seems like a great idea, too, from a, what do you do after hand sanitizer? Reminder. I think people are less likely to be touching their face with the, like, plastic food service gloves than they would be, you know, just kind of carelessly after they've sanitized.
Yes, I mean, because those, those gloves are like big, like, you know, they're not fitted, form-fitted or anything, but it keeps you protected. And then we just have our little garbage barrel right there. I, I think that might ease that comfort level of people touching things in constant contact, especially because normally we have those books separated out into genres. And if we're just having people dump them on the table, or not dumped, but bring them right out and put them out, we're not going to be able to separate like we normally would.
Yeah, it's going to be tougher to, to, to keep things separated, but I think that we would just have, we would have volunteers helping out with the sale who would, you know, just sort of move things around and sort things to the best of our ability as, you know, throughout the day.
What about the people control? Because it's not, I'm less worried about people touching than the, it's not that big of a space, especially if it's raining, or if it's nice and there's lots of people. It's just not that, you kind of have to get in pretty close to read the titles, so.
It's true. So what I think, what I was thinking about that was having some kind of spacer on the table, like, you know, you, you know, if we have a, if we have a six-foot table, have it, you know, have pieces of tape or something in, you know,
One person per table.
Well, two, maybe two people per table, but, you know, sort of tape it out, just say, wait your turn. You know, and wait until, wait until the next person has moved on to, you know, to, to occupy that spot. That, that was the best that I came up with for that.
Joe, what if you did something like this? What if you put like all the Danielle Steele books at the corner of Grand and Fairview, John Irving at the corner of Lincoln and Main, and just give people a map?
I like that. I like that. Space it out.
I don't know how you're going to, I'm going to, I'm going to echo it with Rachel. I mean, I've been there times when you've got a gazillion people there. How are you going to, I mean, you're talking about trying to control them at a concert. These people are all looking for bargains. I mean, holy Moses.
How many, how many books are you going to have? You know, how many books come in usually? I mean, we're loaded with books. So I don't know, how do you control that?
How do we control the number of donations that we take in, you mean?
How many people drop off books? You know, just drop them off.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we would just have to limit the, the time that we accepted donations, or maybe we just say, no, no donations. That will reduce the, you know, the, you know, and then we can focus on the, the things that we already have on hand. We already have, you know, a lot of donations on hand. Plus, the, the, the books that are being withdrawn from the, the system.
The only good thing would be if it's like a nice weather forecast, and if we got those six-foot tables, you know, we had multiple tables, and just like spread them out in front of the building as well, not just under that little awning thing to kind of make space as well. So like, if we have Danielle Steele romance novels, like those type, all, and if we could, in one way, collect them all together. So if somebody's like, oh, I just want romance novels, we could say, okay, those are down that way. And, you know, like around the building, so we could space them out. You know, the caveat is, if it's rainy, then that kind of goshes that. But maybe that's something we kind of gauge as it gets closer. Because I have a feeling a lot of people had that same sentiment with the Altmac Garage Sale on the community page, that they have been storing up stuff for over a year now, and people are looking forward to this. So I would feel that we're going to get inundated with donations, because people have been looking to donate books all over the place.
Yeah.
So it might be a scary donation flood.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm worried about having an unmanageably large flood of donations, definitely.
I'm actually leaning toward not having donations. I think that would be my vote at this point, just because the, you can space out books if you don't have a million of them. But then it, it would be really hard, and I, I mean, we have a box of books that we've had for a year at our house. I assume most people do, and I think you are going to get just flooded.
What if you did this? What if you, what if you, if we, if we really are going to go ahead and do this, what if you have a period of time for donations like the, not the week preceding, but the three weeks ahead of that week, and the people have to make an appointment, just like they're going to come And the people have to make an appointment, just like they're gonna come to browse. They have to make an appointment to drop off their books. And then you could then go through them, Joe, and just recycle the ones that just aren't worth even putting out there and just holding on to the ones that you think you might be able to sell. And that way, you're not gonna, that way, you don't end up at the end having to figure out, what do we do with all these, this 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 enormous number of books? And but I mean, that's also controlling. This is the only way you're gonna be able to do this is you have to make an appointment to drop off the books. I don't know. I'm just thinking if you're trying to control this. Because people are people and they're gonna just come on Friday and just keep coming on Friday. And they're gonna come Friday night when we're not there either, so.
And drop off. The quarantine time, too, for the books.
That too. Books, too.
So we'd have to cut it off by at least Wednesday.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, that way, that way, you could actually just go through first and just do a first, pick out the books that you think are really gonna sell. Because we got a lot of stuff that just doesn't sell. I mean, it never will sell.
Sure.
What are, what are thoughts on like extending the hours to, not necessarily with P, we always have books at the end. And if we have them under the awning, we always just have, you know, basically free pickings. And we could have like a donation box or something, right? If you didn't want to come when everyone else was there, but you just, you want to come, you would have come, but there were too many people. So you just combine, if you want to leave a few bucks for the library. I don't know if we have a spot to do that, but you know, some donations available, but it kind of can extend it, but unmonitored.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think I I think that's something that is something that we've always done. It's always kind of worked out that way that we we leave everything out for for another day or two and everything gets sort of more more picked over before everything leftover gets gets taken to the recyclers. So let's see. So with Dan's idea for taking in donations two or three weeks ahead of time and having a set number of donation slots. The the only, my my concern there is that if we are taking in donations that long ahead of time, then we are going to need more volunteers coming in and out of the building to run everything out to the tables the Friday before.
That's a good point.
Trying to avoid that if we could.
This is about two months out. Are we approximately now?
Well, yeah, a little bit less.
Yeah, a little bit less.
We still will be getting reports from the health department on what the recommendations are. Certainly, a lot of the population is not going to be vaccinated by then. We always have the weather as an issue. I don't know. It seems like we have some challenges ahead of us. And I think we would need to think about like, why do we want to do it? We all want to return to normal, of course, and the library does make some money. But I think we'd have to weigh out all of the reasons that we really want to do it with all of the reasons why it may not be wise to go ahead and, you know, try to do it. It seems a little unmanageable to me, but, you know, I
yeah, I agree with that, Paul. Very much so. I think maybe another year won't, you know, won't kill you, kill us.
I, you know, another
Too many ifs.
I have kind of an odd idea. And just kind of spitballing, what if we were to take in donations of books? And provide a box of books to anyone who's willing, who's on the PTA list of garage sale stops. And people and people could put out a donation box for the library alongside a box of library books at each of those stops that people will be going to anyway. And then at the end of the day, they bring their, bring the library any leftover books and whatever donations they were able to collect.
Not sure I follow that.
Well, so they're usually about, they're usually about 100 stops on the PTA map for the garage sale. So if if people who were going to be hosting a garage sale anyway, as part of their garage sale hosted a mini book sale, a one or two box book sale for the library, and provided the library part of their proceeds to the library at the end of the day, we would take advantage of spacing out over the entire village.
That's an interesting idea.
Basically, a tiny book sale at all of the garage sale stops.
Right. This street could be mystery and this street could be the romance.
Yeah.
Because you could even divide it a little bit like that.
And maybe you could talk to Peter Burbot and see, you know, with him, the head of the PTA, if that is something that we could do, like, it's kind of like little satellite book sale places where we'd know who had what. You know, give them X number of books or whatnot, just for your tracking. But, I mean, maybe it could work.
That's just something to think about or some variation of it, but find a way to space out beyond.
In the context of of being safe, too, you know.
Right.
Because we are, we do get big crowds there. I mean, y'all have that, y'all have been there, so.
Yeah.
Big crowds and 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 in close proximity to one another. I hear what Paul's saying. And so that that might be a really great idea, Shannon.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think I think that's right. The other thing that I was, I was also, that just occurred to me is that we we could, we could do a book sale a different time. It doesn't have to be associated with the with the garage sale, with the village wide garage sale. And, you know, that would be another way that we could get rid of our weeded books, which we really, really do need to to get rid of. Because it's it's been over a year now since we've done a weeding. But if we did it independently of the garage sales, then, you know, maybe we would have less, you know, less crowds, less pressure for donations, especially if they were done, it was done after the the garage sales. You know, maybe people would have put out their their own books that they would have donated at their own sales at that point. And we don't, you know, we we could also we we could also just just have a have a have a, we could do it in in sort of more piecemeal fashion where we have tables that we put out there from time to time throughout the summer and just say, leave, you know, leave a donation in this jar. So that we're we're sort of parceling it out and it's not, it doesn't become an attraction for a crowd. And if somebody walks off with with 25 books, it's not, you know, it's it's not the end of the world. So that might be another way of doing something similar without having to worry about the crowds and not worrying how the dealing with the the logistics of of the donations.
Because I think that's part of it is that isn't, this isn't just a financial aspect of things. It's also because we need the space. So we, as the library, kind of have to do a weeding. So we need to figure out one way to safely and actively do it. But it's not just that financial factor. So maybe if there's like a gorgeous Saturday and within capacity, we can push stuff outside and say, okay, here you go. Great. Because I'd still, regardless, people are gonna be like, oh, it's garage sale day. You know, history connotates that people know the book sales always happened on big garage sale day, so they still might swarm there regardless.
Yeah, well, if there's, I mean, if there's nothing to swarm around, then they'll they'll get.
Right, so.
Okay, so I I'm 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 hearing, I'm hearing a lot of good good ideas, a lot of wise concerns about doing it in the way that we've done it before. So.
Joe, one more idea, just throw, and that is, what if we just put out the books the night before? Had a, had a box, a lockbox someplace for donations and just let it totally be self-service? And people just come and there you go.
I mean, yeah, without the crowds, the the crowds would be even worse, I think.
We wouldn't have to be there.
Well, yeah.
Looking out for my board, Joe. I'm just looking out for my board.
And I, and 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 good, good work on that front. Yeah, no, I I don't, I don't love that idea. I I I think we could do that on a different day at a different time. When we're not, you know, when we're not a magnet for the, you know, the bargain hunters from around the region coming out. And then, you know, yeah, so, but, yeah.
And I think I can talk, I'm wondering, I'm wondering, too, if I think us just talking through this, like, I don't think the PTA, I think they want it to happen, but I know they haven't had their meeting about it yet. Which just this talk makes me wonder if they're thinking. I think once you start talking things through, I think everyone's want to return to normal is coming up first. But I'm wondering even with the PTA, if they decided to push the date back. I don't know, because I think this garage sale can draw so many people to it that the more the conversation happens, I I might be interesting how that decision even keeps continuing to unfold.
Yeah, I know in the the Facebook conversations about it, a lot of people have said that they are planning on going ahead with personal garage sales that day, even if the PTA doesn't provide maps or or formal event. So something will probably come together, unless the PTA can give people an alternate date to look forward to. I have the feeling you're gonna get a lot of people out no matter what.
I I I didn't I didn't hear this level of 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 caution on the, but then when do you ever hear caution on Facebook? But I I didn't, you know, I didn't see a whole lot of nuanced thought about, you know, how this is all gonna play out in those Facebook posts. But I I think, Katie, I think you're absolutely right. When a couple of people start sitting down talking about this, you know, a lot of these concerns are gonna come up pretty quickly and you're gonna quickly run into the, you know, the health concerns. And as much as we like to think that things are gonna be all back to normal really soon, once you put something on the calendar and
Just liability concerns, you know, like, I don't, you have to think about what you want your name tied to, right? And it's different if people just open up their own house, but you're a library, you're a school, you're a PTA. I think just putting your name to something can add another layer of thinking.
Let me talk to Peter, see if, see how far this discussion has has developed beyond the the Facebook posts.
I think the meeting is Thursday to decide. I can let you know I'll be at the meeting, so probably.
Melanie, if you wouldn't mind, just sort of report out to them about the conversation that we're having and some of the kinds, you know, some of the concerns that are being raised, you know, amongst us.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. The last thing is a talking point of the month, Joe.
Yeah, this is something that we had talked about in the context of the the training with with Tim Burke. You'll remember the the horrifying story that he told about the the one library trustee who would purposely bump into other customers at the grocery store as a way of of provoking a conversation about what was going on with her library. So please don't do that. Please do not run into people at the the grocery store. Please do not bump into their carts. But I would like to have everybody armed with talking points that you can maybe go a little bit out of your comfort zone to purposely bring up in the meetings and conversations that you're having around the community. And I will always try to put a couple of these on the the director's report every month. So for this month, the 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 first director's, the the first talking point that I put on the director's report is a little bit is a little bit outdated because since I published this or since I sent this out, we have gotten this notification about the the legislature's one house bills on the budget. But if anybody wants to advocate on behalf of strong library funding for strong library systems throughout the state, please get in contact with your legislators. We've got two very supportive state legislators who are great champions of of library service. Michelle Hinsey is still learning the ropes. And, you know, still still figuring out the the lay of the land. So the more that we can impress on her early in her term that, you know, that that libraries are important to her district, the better a champion she's going to be empowered to be. So state funding for for libraries is a big one. And I I put a link in the director's report to the online advocacy center where you can sign up to receive notification and to easily be able to send out letters advocating on in support of strong library funding. Number two, the gratitude wall, the gratitude wall. So it just so happens to be the one year anniversary today of the day that we all met, those of us who were on the board at the time to decide to close down the library for what at the time we thought was going to be two weeks and turned into three months. Thank you all for, you know, all of your service and all of the I I can, I can tell you that that was a, you know, I I don't, I don't like to close for snow. I don't like to close for any reason. So the idea that we were gonna be shutting down for two weeks was really scary. Anyhow, at the end of a very long year, I'm focused on gratitude and what I am thankful for. And so to that end, I have built a digital gratitude wall, which you can get to from the slider on the front page of our website, where you can post things that you've been grateful for over the past year. And we've already gotten a couple of really great submissions to to that gratitude wall. So just, you know, sharing, sharing what you're grateful for and just, you know, another way for us to serve our community and and put our gratitude out there. Finally, the third talking point is something that we talked about quite a lot a couple of years ago, but have sort of not paid too much attention to since. And that was our decision to go find free for all children's materials. I, we got in a couple of records that could have could have been checked out as long ago as 1968, that were just returned to the library the other day. There's nothing that indicates that they were withdrawn from the collection. So it seems to me that they probably were checked out by somebody at some point and just.
Bob Newhart, was it?
It was not the button down mind of 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 Bob Newhart. Do you still have yours?
Looking for that one, Joe.
Ah, no, it's a couple of Schubert's, a couple of Schubert concertos. But I use that as a spring point, springboard for some social media posts and and an enterprise column about how nobody should be afraid to bring things back that that we we want to decouple anxiety and fear from the library experience. And it's so easy for people, especially kids, to feel like they've done something wrong, that they've kept something out, that they've, that the the librarian is going to be angry at them, that they have disqualified themselves from the library community. And we want people to not feel like that. So that was a big part of the reason that we decided a couple of years ago to go find free for kids. All of our children's materials, whether it's teachers taking it out, parents taking them out, kids taking them out, always find free. Last year, we extended that to young adult materials. So young adult materials, no matter who's checking them out, are always going to be fine free. Moreover, we decided at the time that we were going to, for anybody who, any kids who came in, anybody who was under 18, that we would zero out their overdue fines. You got to come in to to do it, or you have to make that. Uh, you got to come in to, to do it or you have to make that contact. We can't just go into the system and wave magic wand and uh, and zero it out. So we want that contact. We could do that, but we would rather have the, the contact where, you know, it feels like that, that kind of absolution, um, where we, you know, we're, we're forgiving the, the old debt. So uh, let it be known, let, make sure that, that, that people in your orbits know that, that there's, it's never too late to return something, that nobody's going to be angry, that you haven't done something wrong. We're not like Colony. We're not going to call a collection agency on you. We are uh, a, a forgiving and loving people. And um, so um, let's try to spread that message as much as we can. So that's it. Those are our talking points for the, uh, for the month.
I would like to add a quick kudos that I was out talking with uh, my neighbors the other day who said that they have been picking up bags of uh, mixed grab bags of books for their infant daughter um, over the course of the pandemic. She's just about six months old now and that they have been having a marvelous time seeing what it is that gets put out for them every week. So they were very, very grateful and have been telling everybody that they know that has small children about the just call and ask for some random books service.
I, I have to second that too, because we get the, we got the last thing of truck books and he carries them around. So we, uh, we also love the grab bag of books. That might have to be a feature that you keep. So if you don't feel like looking at your own, the grab bag of books is surprisingly good.
You know, it's, it is, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things that we started out of necessity because people would, you know, call us up and say, I want something. If I was able to come and browse, I would do it, but I can't. So just pick me out five books, put them in a bag and you know, I'll, I'll come. And we've been doing that and we've been dropping them off at people's houses for people who can't get here. And, and we increasingly are aware of our friends who have a more difficult time getting here. So in those cases, we will put together a bag of books and you know, just drop it off the house and you know, they're not all going to be winners. But um, but the, uh, but it's, it's something that, that uh, that I've been doing, that the rest of the staff has been doing. Um, and uh, it's definitely going to be something that we keep on doing, uh, even in, you know, in the, uh, uh, in the aftertimes.
Yeah, well, I wanted to let you know that you've been a bright spot in Olivia and Keegan's quarantine and uh, they're very grateful for you and they want everyone to know it. So I wanted you to know it too, if they hadn't told you.
Right on. That's great.
Right. Anything else for the good of the cause? Can I get a motion to adjourn then at eight 53? Thank you folks again for spending your evening this evening. I know it was a lot to get through, but it was important. A motion to adjourn. Dick?
I, I won't say that.
I knew you would.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Dan.
Second it, somebody's got to second it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Melanie, all in favor? Have a wonderful week.
I, I.
Thanks, yes.
Great work.